Good evening, everyone. Please excuse our late reconvening of our open session from executive session. I know we should have been back here at seven. That being said, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If you could remain standing for a moment of silence, and I would like us to remember one of our teachers who passed away this past Monday, who has worked for the Coventry Public Schools for the past 20 years, Ron Gilmet. We send our condolences to his family and to all of his colleagues and to ourselves. You may be seated. And Mr. Levis, if you could do the safety notification, please?
Sure, in case of an emergency, if you exit the building to your rear to either the right or the left, when you get out to the fore, you can exit either to the front of the building or to the parking lot.
Thank you. And Mrs. Colonian, if you could read the mission statement for Coventry Public Schools, please.
Coventry Public Schools with community partnerships educate, inspire, and motivate students to be lifelong learners.
Thank you. And just so the public is aware, the school committee met in executive session from about six o'clock to 7:30. And there were several votes taken that I would like to tell you about. The first one was for our homeschooling requests, and that was carried five to zero, full approval. The second motion was for our executive session minutes, which again were approved four yea and one abstention. We approved the foreign exchange student by a vote of five to zero. And we also had a vote in regard to litigation, and that was carried by a five to zero vote as well. That being said, is there a motion to seal the records of, seal the minutes of the executive session?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to seal the records of the executive session.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to the approval of our open meeting minutes, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the records of the, to approve the minutes of the open meetings of 6:12 2018 FT Financial Town Meeting, 6:26 2018, June 27 2018, and July 11 2018, as presented slash amended.
Is there a second on that?
I can't second that. I'll second.
All in favor? Any questions?
I have to abstain.
Okay.
Because one of them includes a meeting I was not, I did not attend.
All right, so that's four approved, one abstention. Motion carries. Moving on to our personnel, Mr. Levis, did you want to speak to any of these certified recalls?
Just, we're, I think we're fortunate, again, individuals have taken leave, so we're able to recall two other individuals that are currently on layoff.
Thank you. Is there a motion to recall the following certified staff?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to recall the following certified staff to positions remaining open after July 9 2018 Job Fair for the 2018-2019 school year. Elsie Seffick, regular point four, library media specialist district wide. Colleen Riesling, regular 1.0, strive teacher, Western Coventry Elementary School.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to certified resignations. Did you want to speak to any of these? You're all set? Okay, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the resignation of Virginia Jacobs, music teacher for the district, after exercising her second rate of refusal to be recalled to a position.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to certified leaves without pay, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve a leave without pay for Sarah Lingrel, 1.0 culinary teacher at the Regional Career and Tech Center at Coventry High School for the 2018-2019 school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. And finally, Judith Almikuto?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve a leave without pay for Judith Almikuto, 1.0 reading teacher at Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School for the 2018-2019 school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to certified appointments, Mr. Levis, did you want to speak to any of these?
No, I think we're, again, we're very fortunate for these hires, and I don't think anybody's.
No, I don't think they're here, so.
That's it.
All right, so is there a motion for Geraldine Baxter?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Geraldine Baxter, regular 1.5 business teacher at Coventry High School for the 2018-2019 school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Megan Plus?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Megan Plus, regular 1.0 pre-K, pre-kindergarten special ed teacher at Washington Oak Elementary School for the 2018-2019 school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Lisa Thoreau?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Lisa Thoreau, 1.0, regular 1.0 school nurse teacher at Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School for the 2018-2019 school year.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Now, we're going to be moving into the public agenda, and in the, in the following agenda items will be open for comment and concerns from, or questions from the audience. So, the first one was number seven, but I don't believe we have a celebration this evening.
No.
Okay, so moving on to number eight, which is the NIAS Collaborative Conference Report, which was our reference number three. I believe Mr. Chase is here to speak to this.
Let's have a celebration for that. Okay, nice to see everybody. I haven't seen most of you since graduation, so nice to see you again. We had a visit from NIAS. If you recall back in, I want to say February or March, I made a presentation to talk about the visit that was coming. Just a quick review for people who may not be familiar with NIAS. I'm going to try to be brief. There's a lot of words on the slides, but I'm just going to kind of, important salient points here, especially without air conditioning. So, NIAS is an accrediting agency. It accredits 2,000 schools and colleges in six New England states and around the world. Accreditation is really important to high schools because it determines if we meet or exceed quality standards across the board for what we offer to students, and it makes sure that our credits transfer and are accepted by colleges and other schools as well, to make sure that everybody has a minimum level of performance and things that we offer. So, those standards for accreditation, they look at student learning, they look at learning resources, learning support, professional practices, and learning culture. In May, we had a visit from NIAS, which is the first in our new series of visits that happen. In the past, it was always a five-year cycle, a 10-year cycle, I'm sorry. There'd be one visit, they would come in and give you recommendations, they would send 12 people to your school for a period of three or four days, they would look at everything that goes on in the school, they would visit classrooms, they would talk to all of the people, then they would tell you how you're doing based on a report that they had. If you remember the presentation that I did, they changed the way they do things now, starting in 2020. We're one of the very first schools in New England that are going to have that visit in 2020. And what they do now is they make a first visit, we create a report that kind of talks about these things that go on in our building. What are our intervention strategies like? Our school growth and improvement plan? Do we have written curriculum? What's our school site and plant look like? What are the vision of the graduate is a new term that they're using now, and is the environment safe for kids? We do a self-study, we report what we found, then NIAS sends a first small group of people that visit, speak to school committee people, speak to central office administration, speak to high school administrators, teachers, students, follow students around the building, teachers, parents, everybody in the community, and then they give us feedback on our report to see how accurate that is so that we can start to build a plan for the big visit that's coming down the line. We identify three or four areas that, that may need improvement as part of that process. So, this is the cycle. So, if you're looking here, the self-reflection part is gone, the collaborative conscience visit happened already. Right now, we're in the process of developing the growth plan that came right out of that visit. The implementation of that plan is in 2019. We get that report, and then we make a new plan, and then we just keep going. It's a continuous cycle. We're never not in a cycle of improving constantly with NIAS' help. It's a, it's a much better process than it was in the past, in my opinion. So, in that self-reflection, we look back at the past three to five years, what are our current conditions? What's our capacity to grow and change? What are our goals for the future? And then what were the areas that we identified as important to us, an impact on student learning, which again is the bottom line for everything that we do, and ensured that there were no omissions, nothing big that we missed when we were doing our self-study. So, what we found was, pretty much everything that we wrote about, they agreed with our findings, for the most part. We did a really good job with that self-study. Kristen Capwell and Julie Macaron were the chairs. They were absolutely phenomenal in a kind of a short workspace to get a whole lot done. They were absolutely, I couldn't have picked two better people to work with me on this. So, first element, big element, learning culture. We met the standard for that, according to NIAS, and the text is there, but really the key sentence is there, "At Coventry High School, students feel safe. Students and adults maintain positive relationships with one another, and the level of personalization and mutual trust is the foundation and feeling of safety." It's consistent, you know, it's, it's, kids are safe. They feel safe, they feel good about being there. The next element on the learning culture, again, we met the standard. The school has a written document describing its core values and beliefs about learning and the vision of the graduate. We have a vision of the graduate, it's not written up as the vision of the graduate because that's a brand-new term, and that's something that's part of the plan going into next year, as I'll discuss. The key is, we have 22 different core proficiencies that include speaking, listening, research, technology, presentation, media use, artistic creation. All of those things are needed in order to graduate. So, when you're looking at, what do you have for a successful graduate, they should be able to do all of these things in order to be successful in life, no matter what area they want to go in, no matter what their field is. Those are all part of, they're already embedded in the things that we do, and we met the standard there, according to NIAS. The first one that we did not meet the standard in, there is not currently a written curriculum for all courses in all departments in a form, in a very specific form that's, it's across all departments. Now, again, that's a traditional issue. In previous administration, before Mr. Coward had his job, that has been worked on in the last couple of years, English and math, and specifically have had a lot of work done. PE and health is done, basically at this point, just needs to be approved. Social studies is next, coming up. Science has had a whole lot of work done, we're, we're working towards that, but we're not there because we were kind of years behind in that process. So, that was acknowledged, that we're, we're doing good work, but we're still not at the place right now where we meet the standard across the board with all courses and all classes. Professional practices, we do not currently have a school improvement team or a growth plan. The idea behind that was, in the previous year before last year, Mr. Hoben knew that they were coming here to make this visit. Mr. Hoben's assumption and working process there was that this process, this self-study, would lead to a school improvement plan, and then we would work towards it. That's why that was not in place. The, the work and the time that was going to be put into this process was going to supplant the time that would be used for a school improvement team and a school improvement plan, because this plan, because this is what this is all about. So, currently, that's not there. That's coming up. That is one of the things that we're going to do this year. Learning support, so again, if our process for IEPs, our process for 504s, our process for RTI is as good as anything I've seen in any school I've ever been in. RTI at a high school level is an extraordinarily difficult process. It's not like in elementary school where they're in one classroom all day, or where there's a team always working with kids. You've got seven, sometimes eight, nine, 10 different teachers with a student. For them all to be able to identify and work with a student with a plan, that is extraordinarily difficult at a high school, and I think Coventry is leading the way. We're going to be the model for that in the next couple of years. People are going to be coming to us to see how to do this. I can tell you, after having worked in other districts where this is not being done at all. But we do meet the standard for learning support. Learning resources, again, this is about the facility itself, about the building. That was something that we currently are not meeting the standard. Again, it's about heating and ventilation, it's about the building, and it is a tired building. That's the bottom line. There needs to be an investment that's made there. They talked about some of the good things. We do have a five-year maintenance plan. We do have Chromebooks, but we have a very large building. It's very difficult to maintain, there's been cuts in the custodial staff. I was talking to Mr. Coward about, literally, you have students that they'll be in social studies one period in the wintertime, they will have to wear a jacket and gloves and a hat in the class because it's so cold, and literally walk across the hallway and have to change like they're going to gym class because the classroom across the hall is 30 or 40 degrees difference. It's a dramatic difference. So, that's, that came up across the board, teachers, kids, central office people, everybody that walked through the building. It's fairly obvious, that's a place that we need to make an investment, and we didn't meet the standard there. So, again, commendations, those are on the screen, I'm not going to read them all to you, but again, safe, positive, respective, respectful culture in the school. The elimination of, again, this with the new administration that came in, the elimination of lower-level courses and implementation of heterogeneous grouping, raising the bar for everybody is something that they recognized and wanted to commend us on.
Excuse me, Mr. Chase, may I ask you a question?
Of course.
When I read this report this afternoon, when I see commendations, is this what the committee gave you?
This is the committee's commendations to us.
To you.
Yes.
And now, in your self-study, did you come up with your own recommendations too that they looked at, or was it just sort of?
We had to identify, based on what our self-study said and then looking at their standards.
Yes.
We had to identify three, the objective is three or four goals that we would identify as things that we felt were weaknesses that we needed to address and work on.
So, you identified three or four goals?
Correct.
And then what we're seeing here is what they've identified, what they saw as strengths?
What you're seeing for commendations and recommendations is what the committee wrote in their report regarding what they observed and what they heard from people and what the information that they gathered. This was their feeling about what our school was.
Good, thank you so much.
Sure. It's what was good and what needed some work. This is the committee's, where it's not ours. So, again, elimination of lower-level courses, the RTI process was again a commendation. And again, I can tell you, having worked in other places, those are all very true. Programs and processes in place to ensure that every student has at least one adult in the building who knows a student well. Again, Mr. Levis talks about that all the time. That's something that I can tell you, again, if you see me and social me at all, one of the things that amazed me this year, and speaking of graduation, you saw 125 teachers at graduation that were there in the back, hugging it out with kids, talking to kids, getting them ready. You don't see that in other schools. I can tell you, having worked in other schools, this is a place that really cares about kids and loves kids, and that came out very strongly in this report. Collective responsibility, the task the staff takes for the well-being of students, enthusiasm and genuine interest of teachers, this is all clear every single day. Anybody that comes in our building can see this, or anybody talks to our teachers. Enthusiastic, caring leadership provided by the principal and administrative team. Implementation of one-to-one, multiple opportunities for students to demonstrate their learning through our common assessments. Again, more commendations, opportunities for students to own their own learning. Resources to develop curriculum are coming in place. Collaboration between teachers, again, the community, the sense of community that happens in that building with, between teachers and kids is phenomenal. Efforts to meet the needs of each kid, community partnerships, all of those things are commendations. We had a lot of commendations. Now, recommendations, these are recommendations on the other side where they're saying, this is something to think about in the future. Ensure that the faculty and building administrators have sufficient input regarding the development of district and school-wide initiatives. Ensure that the principal has sufficient autonomy to lead the school. Ensure that as curriculum is updated, the school has the resources necessary, including texts, supplies, etc. So, you have the curriculum, you better have the things to back those things up. Provide opportunities to develop and demonstrate transferable skills, those skills that we're talking about, no matter what you want to do in your life, you'll be able to use those skills in where you're going. Develop clear policies and practices and systems to ensure all students revise and improve their work. That's another thing that we're looking at as a school, for sure. Again, protocols for student work, to have teachers look at student work and to make sure grading is consistent across the board, share each other's grade together. That's always an important process. Ensure adequate support for the library and media and technology services and support our one-to-one, and provide sufficient staff to meet the nursing needs of each student. Those are recommendations. So, the growth plan, again, what we had to do was come up with three or four priority areas, and they can also include school or district initiatives. We're responsible for following through on this, and we'll have 18 months to implement this plan from when they made that visit in May. So, this is something we're going to go heavy on as soon as we get there. So, priority area one, this was our, what we chose, they agreed with the three that we chose. So, again, priority one is written curriculum for every course in each department using common templates. That includes units of study with guiding essential question concepts, content, skill, integrating the school's vision of the graduate, which is being developed as well. That was priority number one. Priority two is development of that school improvement and growth plan. We will have, we already have scheduled school improvement team meetings. I have not discussed how that's going to go. My expectation is, I will probably be in charge of the school improvement team because I'm in charge of the NIAS team as well. It makes sense for me, I've been a school improvement team leader in other buildings before, so. But certainly, I will have a process where lots of people are involved, if school committee, if central office people want to be part of that, that's something that I'll definitely be encouraging as well as students and teachers and parents. So, again, input by all stakeholders, that's the next thing. Number three, again, the community and district must provide Coventry High School with school building and facilities that support the delivery of high-quality curriculum programs and services. It talks about significant deficits that are impacting learning, and again, it's about air conditioning, HVAC, furniture, the basic things that are, the fundamental Maslow's hierarchy of needs, being comfortable, being able to feel safe in a building. And then, number four was developing that vision of a graduate. That's going to come through the school improvement process, and as they said, the foundation is already there, we just need to change the wording and put it in a format that works for them. They added an additional one to ensure that all students receive appropriate support for their social, emotional needs, especially students that are coming back from hospitalizations of various kinds. That's something all schools struggle with, and we certainly do as well. It recognized that we work hard to provide those services, but it happens more often for special education students because they have more options available to them. The idea was, regular education students coming back from hospitalizations who may not have an IEP or 504 also need some supports, and we want to be able to open up some of those options to them as well. So, 2019, we'll have a report that says what progress we've made from that May until the end of this school year. It'll include these things, a look back, same things as that last report. And we'll be back into that cycle, so then they'll come in 2020. So, that's the highlight, that's as fast as I could do that, so. It's a big process.
It is, yeah.
Any questions?
I have, can I have two minutes?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Some of these things are going to have a higher price tag than others.
For sure.
When you start talking about infrastructure. And so, we need to be able to start working with you as quickly as possible to get the resources that you're going to need. So, how soon will you be able to present us with some plan that says, you know, we're going to, we believe, need X amount of money to fix this, or do this, or do the curriculum or what have you, because we need that kind of data quickly, so.
We may already have that in place. Mr. Martin, I know, took them on a tour and was highlighting various areas that were of concern. I'm sure there's something, or we could put it together fairly quickly.
We need to, we need to look at.
We've been on the record for a while about a lot of these.
But I don't think any of the needs are, right, but I don't think any of these needs are going to be a surprise. I think as a committee, we have to figure out how we're going to get money, get, you know, rally the community to support these. I mean, some of the, you know, and that's what, because the infrastructure's been an issue.
Right.
And it's an issue, when we talk about not having any capital funds for 10 years other than bond issue, bonds that, you know, maybe energy bonds where we replace a couple of roofs. So, I think we need to think about how we're going to do business differently to get, you know, and I don't have a solution to that. I mean, I'm definitely willing to be part of that, but this has been ongoing. So, I, you know, the curriculum work, we've done, you know, we've been working on that, you know, and trying to look at systems, putting systems in place so that, you know, people have been working very hard, as Mr. Chase said, there's been a lot of people working really hard. We're putting systems in place where we're actually, you know, everybody's looking, we're looking at work horizontally, vertically, so I don't think any of this, these areas are a surprise. It's going to be our role in terms of, as we do the budget for next year, and I'll be talking a little bit later about safety and the grant that Sarah and Lori involved with this COPS grant. We have to budget, you know, next year, look at what these needs are, and find a way to include them in our budget, and truly advocate for that. Some are going to be easier than others, you know, but I feel that, you know, this, everything that you're going to present, presented shouldn't be a surprise to any of us. We saw some of the cuts that we made this year, so.
None of these things are a surprise at all, but I'm just saying that we need to move as quickly as possible to identify this list of critical needs.
I think we could make a prioritized list.
And resources, so that we can start working it into our budget and start working these things out, because usually the council asks us for a budget, a draft in December, and December is just a few months away, and so we need to work on that.
May I add something?
Sure.
Every time we do this, it's placed in the capital improvement budget, it goes before the planning commission, the planning commission, we rate all the priorities that we need. For instance, the furnace, it goes back, it aged 1975.
It's the same furnace from the 70s, yeah.
Yep. And every time it goes before the council, the council says they can't, they say, it revolves around maintenance of effort. So, it's really not so much the school committee as it is the council that are concerned that they're going to have to keep paying for the same, if we ask for $500,000 for a furnace, the council comes back and they say, that's a maintenance of effort, and we're not going to do that.
I'm not sure if that's 100% correct. I think you can separate capital from your maintenance and your operating. I think what we really, I think what we really need to think about, and is correct in the sense that if the voters approve the new plan for capital improvements in schools, we need to somehow be able to have some shovel-ready projects that we're, that we're ready to go forward within this community and get that on our docket somehow, and get it approved, and get the credits, and get the extra points because of XYZ, because the plan, I mean, it looks like a wonder to get the money if we get it, and it's through a bond of some sort.
If I could, I'd like to thank Tim for his work in moving this committee and facilitating this visit. I think it was clearly a group effort, but the leadership is clear around this process. So, thank you, job well done. I will tell you, he's outlined the three goals for you. We will meet, we will design a plan for implementation of those goals and attack, and we will present to you any budgetary impacts that those three goals may have. Facilities is another whole issue. We're happy to sit with Jason and the superintendent and the administrative team at the high school, go through the list of priorities, both from the NIAS report, from the information that the superintendent has, make a prioritized list with our best efforts around what the budgetary impacts are for that list, particularly to the high school. We're happy to give that information to you in the future. We're going to need a little time to get the team together and to do this, but I'm happy to bring it forward.
Excellent. I have, I have one other comment.
Okay.
Oh, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, too.
Okay. Oh, you want to go first?
Go first.
One of the things that I noticed was that when we laid off some teachers, one of the positions that was on the layoff list had to do with a position of a guidance counselor at the high school.
Correct.
So, I went to a PTA meeting, and people are hysterical that we're going to be losing accreditation because we're going to be short one person. Then we go to hearings, and again, hysteria about losing accreditation because of one position, et cetera. And so, what I'm concerned about is, as we go forward with developing and meeting the goals that you have set forth and which the committee has agreed to, that we have in place some type of communication plan by which we can manage information, so the public has a clear picture of what we are doing, that we know where we're going, we have a vision, we have a time schedule, we know what resources are needed, so that we don't have these rumors started that you can't control, and they just spread like wildfire, wildfire.
Wildfire.
Thank you very much. But I mean, we need to manage the communication process, too, and I know that this is a big job to do, but I think communication and managing the communication with the public is extremely important.
I'm 100% in agreement with you. I've spent the last few days with Mrs. May Comber in my office, talking about how if we don't tell our story, other people will be telling it for us.
Exactly.
And that we need to do a better job of communicating all of the really great things that are going on in our building, but also the things that we need and the things that are going on. And that's going to be definitely something that you will see a significant change in the coming months and years, for sure. That's going to be a big push coming from.
Information management is so important in this particular situation.
I agree. And in terms of the guidance council, that is one of the, when you have substantive change, they call it, from NIAS, you have 90 days in which to file a report with NIAS that if things fall outside of the guidelines of what they recommend, including percentages of, or numbers of students per guidance counselor, if a librarian is eliminated and that falls below a certain number, if you have a significant reduction in staff, if you have a big change within your building that was different from when they visited, they have 90 days, we have 90 days to inform them of that change, so that they are given notice that there is a significant change, and I believe that has already, that was one of the last things, I think, that Mr. Hoben did. So, that is, I believe, on file with them, that they are aware of that guidance counselor reduction. Now, we haven't got any feedback on that, and the reality is, 2020 is when they'll ding us on something like that, if that's still the situation then, and if they're going to ding us on it, that's when that would happen. But they may give us feedback saying, this is something that could jeopardize your situation. They may tell us, it's okay, you know, that they'll make that determination for us.
Exactly. Thank you.
Sure.
So, I did have a couple of questions about the process. Because it seems like it's a sort of always in cycle, and always trying to self-improve or, you know, correct or whatever, is there ever a date where they actually give you the stamp of approval for NIAS and say you're accredited?
for NIASC and say you're accredited, and if not, or is it just, you know, or how would you fail?
That 2020 report will give you the thumbs up or the thumbs down, or whether you're on a probationary period and you have to fix this within a certain amount of time, they will give you that in 2020. At that point, you start the process all over again and start working. But the difference really is, the old NIASC model was more of a deficit model. It was more about like, they come in and tell you what you're not doing right, or they see if you're lying or not, you know, where this one is much more supportive. It's more like, okay, what have you identified as issues and problems? What kind of feedback can we give you on that, and what kind of support can we give you on that? And if you need help, they can offer help, too. So I think it's an entirely different kind of a model. It's a continuous growth model, which I think in many ways parallels the things that we're trying to do with kids in classrooms, same idea.
So we'll know a little bit more probably at the end of next year, or?
Well, at the end of next year, that, the plan will all be in place and we'll start moving forward. So then we have to make some progress by the time they come, when they come in March, they're gonna, that's the real visit, and things need to be in place, or, you know, we'll get whatever we get for results at that point, and they'll make some kind of a determination. Again, it's either, yes, you're accredited, we're all fine, you're on a probationary situation, or you're not accredited. It's rare that you get the not accredited, it's more often that you're gonna get a, you're on probation and you have this amount of time to fix that, because you can't always put a furnace in, you know, in a six-month period, you may need a little more time, but they might say by 2020, the end of 2021, if this has not been addressed, then you will not be accredited anymore by NIASC.
Yes, yeah.
Good.
Anything else?
I think that was it, except to thank you as well.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your interest.
A lot of great work, and I'm very excited to see the progress. And again, it's a lot of hard work.
It wasn't a short time, but it was, again, I work with great people, so it was made a lot easier by some fantastic people working, to be honest.
Thank you so much. I don't know if, were there any other comments, Donna, or James? All good?
Good.
All right, thank you so much. We look forward to future talks on this. Oh, I had one other question. Were you surprised by anything that they came back with, or?
What I was most surprised by was how parallel their findings were to the findings that we had, that our report was that good based on the timeline that we had to work with and the resources that we had to work with to get people together and do all that writing. It's a lot of writing.
Yeah.
And to get people's approval, all of those things had to be approved by the faculty by a certain percentage, and we had to keep going on for us. So the, for me, I was delighted by how almost identically parallel what our findings were relative to what their findings were. So I thought that was, that was awesome. That was probably the biggest surprise, was there wasn't a lot of difference between what we said and what they said.
And I think the staff and leadership at the high school should be congratulated about that then, because obviously you were very self-reflective, and, you know, they're supposed to be the experts, so obviously if they had come up with something really different, you would sort of be thinking, wow, we don't know ourselves at all. So I'm really glad that.
I think they're very self-aware. And again, the chairs and the committee people that did the writing were fantastic under very difficult circumstances.
It's really nice to hear about the RTI stuff, too. It's just exciting work.
And actually, I have a meeting coming in the next, actually, next week, to again revise, go over what we did, what we did well, and Brooke and I are meeting with the people that we meet with every week to do RTI. We're gonna add an additional day to the timeline that we do to meet about kids and have a separate day to do some tracking of how progress monitoring. So it's gonna be an even more robust system, it's gonna be even better than it already is. I honestly believe within two or three years, we're gonna be the place that everybody comes to to see how to do it at a high school. I really believe that.
Thank you so much.
Including students from other places, too.
Well, could be, could be, but I think we're gonna be the model that other, other schools come to when they wanna see how to do it.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions or comments from the citizens gathered?
They're all employees.
Yeah, I know, but they might wanna say something, accommodation.
Except for Jill.
Okay, then I guess we can move on. Again, thank you very much for the report. Moving on to, I guess we're on number nine, administrative contracts. So did you wanna speak to this before we motion?
Sure. We, we've been going through a lengthy process to make sure that our contracts are, let me back up a bit. Last May, we went and awarded extension or renewal of contracts, and my intent was to show support to all the administrators. Unfortunately, did that without presenting contracts to the committee, you know, realized that that was a mistake. And then from that point on, it's been a long process in terms of looking at the contracts, making sure that the committee was aware of what the contracts were like and what was in the contracts, making sure that we met with every single administrator, this is about certified administrators, went through the contract, make sure that they understood what the contract was and what the language was. And then, so I feel very comfortable that we have a very good contract for our administrators. And like I said, I met with the school committee. What's important about these contracts, too, is that there's a job description as part of that, so by approving this, you'll also be approving the job description. And it doesn't mean down the road that we can't, you know, right now, the job description is part of the contract, but, you know, up until this point, we've had job descriptions, some from 1973. So we worked, you know, very quickly to do this, but I think that they're appropriate. I received feedback on the job descriptions from some, you know, some of the different certified administrators. So what I'm asking you to do is, I'd ask you, we're gonna, you know, you'll obviously make a motion, then we'll read the list of the individuals, and I'd ask you to approve the contracts as presented. And this is just the beginning of a process. Next month, the next school committee will be coming back with the same process with the non-certified administrators. And I feel that, you know, we've worked hard with the union to come up with a good contract with the CTA. We're meeting Monday night to work with the SRP, and Tuesday night. And so I think for a first time in a long time, that we'll, you know, we'll have everybody under a really good contract that everybody's informed about. So that was the process.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the certified administrative contracts as presented. Laurie Andrews, Assistant Superintendent District; Don Cowworth, Director of Curriculum, Instruction and Assessment District; Savick Norelli, Director of Finance District; Denise Ahern, Director of Early Childhood District; Bradley Wilson, Director of Special Education District; Frederick Shakert, Assistant Director of Special Education District; Brooke May Comber, Assistant Principal, Coventry High School; Timothy Chase, Assistant Principal, Coventry High School; Laurie Ferguson, Assistant Principal/ Director of Regional Career Center, Coventry High School; Joseph Lucian, Principal, Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School; Isaiah Norbalucci, Assistant Principal, Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School; Lisa Goodwin, Assistant Principal, Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School; Alicia Reina, Principal, Black Rock Elementary School; Catherine Tancrell, Principal, Hopkins Hill Elementary School; Dominic Juisty, Principal, Ty Oak Elementary School; Christine Mandisi, Principal, Washington Oak Elementary School; Paula Jackard, Assistant Principal, Washington Oak Elementary School; Amy Aslone, Principal, Weston Coventry Elementary School.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item number 10, which is the distribution policy, our second reading, which was our reference number four. Is there a motion to dispense with the second reading?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to dispense with the second reading of the distribution policy. Distribution policy as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. And now moving on to the actual approval of the distribution policy.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the distribution policy as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, any questions from the citizens gathered or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to the search and seizure policy. Is there a motion to dispense with the second reading?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to dispense with the second reading of the search and seizure policy as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to the actual approval of the search and seizure policy.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the search and seizure policy as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to the student-operated motor vehicles on school property. Is there a motion to dispense with the second reading?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to dispense with the second reading of the student-operated motor vehicles on school property policy as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to the actual approval of the policy. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the student-operated motor vehicles on school property policy as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. And again, I would like to thank all the folks involved with those policies and the fact that we were finally able to approve them all. So.
I agree.
Thanks for all. Moving on to item number 13, the superintendent's goals. I don't know if we want a discussion on this. I think, Mr. Levis, did you wanna speak to this at all? I think we discussed this odd infinitum, I think. So are we ready to move?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the superintendent's goals as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any further questions from the committee? Any questions from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. And agenda item number 14, to rescind the building administrative performance compensation and administrator's evaluation instrument, which was our reference number seven. Mr. Levis, did you wanna speak to this?
Sure, just, so part of the consistency we're trying to build into the administrator's contract, there was a section of the, and this is moving forward next year. There was a section that you have in your packet that indicated based on certain, attaining certain levels, that, and this applied only to building principals, building administrators, that they would be compensated based on their performance rating. And what we, going through this process in terms of the contracts, what we felt was important was to make sure that any monetary awards would be embedded within the contract. And so what we, and we explained that with the administrators when I met with them, that, you know, effective this contract year, July 1st, that any monetary awards will be in the contract versus in the past, again, I'm not, you know, this was something that was presented to me, actually administrators made me aware of this my first year as superintendent, so I felt this way we'll be very transparent with the contracts, and any monetary award, again, will be embedded right into the contract. The other part, too, is in terms of equity, central office administrators, other administrators, they weren't, this wasn't available to them. So that was a second part of that.
All right. Any questions for the superintendent?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Is, where does this come from? Is this a policy?
This is, this is what the school committee approved in terms of.
School administrator evaluation.
School administrator evaluation system was approved by the school committee back, I don't know what date it was approved, but it was approved.
It says 15, 16.
But it was approved by Dr. Almeida with the school committee. He presented it, and I know it was approved, there are minutes where it was approved. That's the version that I have, but I know that it was approved by the committee, and that's why we're bringing it forward for the committee to rescind.
Okay, that's fine. This may have been before my time on the committee or not.
I believe it was, I believe it was approved. I think, even though this is 15, 16, I believe it was in 14, 14 that it was approved.
Okay. Very good. I just wanna, I'm fine with rescinding this, but I think we also need to make sure that we start looking at this topic again, the evaluation process in our policies, I'm committed.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion to rescind building administrator's performance compensation administrator's evaluation instrument.
I second the motion.
Any further questions from the committee? Anything from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item number 15, FY19 budget update and discussion. Sarah?
So I'm just gonna be brief. At the August 9th, we'll resume the monthly reports that mirror what we report out to the state. But just to highlight a couple of the things that are in flux right now, some of which are going to our favor. So about two weeks ago, the state did revise our equalized weighted assessment value calculations, which is related to property value, and we did receive a $30,000 increase in our state aid that the state is applying to the FY19 budget. We were one of the biggest winners in that adjustment, so we said we'll take it. We also are looking, actually, we're moving forward with changing our provider for propane, so we will be switching from suburban propane to AmeriGas, and we anticipate a significant savings in that as well. We always run the risk of whatever our winter heating season will look like, so if we have a mild winter, we'll have even better savings. So some of that will be a little bit, a little bit delayed to see the actual results. We still do have another SRP job fair, which will be the last kind of big push of the job adjustments going through. We've had some additional leave without pays that have come through, which have allowed us to replace those positions with lower step salaries, and some of the hires that we've had to make have come in at steps lower than we had originally budgeted. The ones when we have an additional leave without pay, those kind of help us in two areas, one with a lower salary, and also when we can, we bring them back from layoff, which also saves on the unemployment. So I had a large number budgeted for unemployment based on the layoffs that we did, but you've been actively recalling those people back, and we're kind of tracking how that's working to our favor. So I also do think that we should have some savings in the unemployment area as well. So hopefully by the next meeting, I'll have a better handle on some of where the other financial impacts are coming to give a more comprehensive update, you know, by the typical categories that we use. But right now, I'm feeling much better about this budget right now than we were, you know, about a month or so back.
Great.
Thank you.
Any questions for Sarah from the committee? Any questions from the public for Sarah? Seeing none. Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks.
Moving on to 16, the superintendent's report.
I will try to be brief.
I think that's the, that's been the whole thought this.
Especially for the citizens that are here. Okay, where am I?
Sixteen.
So school safety, thank you, thank you, Dick. So we, I wanna, two things just to update about safety, school safety, is that I had a conversation with Ms. Lucian and Mr. Pacheco, our SRO, and we're planning the Alice training for the middle school, and we'll be also planning the training for our elementary schools. Some of the elementary schools, those that had to make up a day, there's an online portion, and our staff did the online portion, but we will make sure that that is taken care of as soon as possible. The other part is that I wanna thank Mrs. Andrews and Ms. Mangerelli, that there was a grant that was available that the chief of police made us aware of. I wasn't able to attend the meeting, so I defer the whole process on to Ms. Andrews, and she's been working with Ms. Mangerelli. It's a matching grant, it'll provide some safety equipment for us, and as Sarah says, I don't wanna put words in her mouth, but these opportunities, even though it's matching, they don't come along often. So it allows us to match over a two-year period of time, or budget over a two-year period of time, so even though we didn't budget for this year, if we can find some resources and then make sure that we include this in our budget for next year, that that would be appropriate with this, with this grant. So I wanna thank them for working. So that's the safety update, school safety. I'm gonna just give you a brief, the high school principal update, you know, we posted the position as anticipated immediately. We have about 29 applicants, I'm gonna look next week. You know, we're gonna make sure that we do what we need to do to get, not the best candidate available, but the best candidate that our community deserves, the high school staff deserves, our students deserve. And I wanna thank Ms. Andrews again, Mrs. Andrews, because when I received notification from Mr. Hoben on, I think it was July 9th, that he was gonna be leaving on the 20th, I also wanna be extremely fair in this process, and, you know, we have three administrators at a high school, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, whether they choose to apply or not, I wanna make sure that they all felt that they were, you know, welcome to apply, and I didn't wanna show any favoritism in one individual. And I felt to show that, you know, this is a, you know, a short term, and I haven't defined what short term is. Ms. Andrews was a phenomenal high school principal before she came here. She definitely knows how to work with individuals to open a building, and I felt like it was the best move that we could make. So, you know, I said in, I believe in an email I sent to the staff, that, you know, we're gonna, you know, looking in August to, and we need someone that's gonna partner with our administrators, with our educators in our, our school community to move our district to where we should be, you know, I believe we should be, and I think many people believe, definitely in the top 10. We have incredible educators, you know, we do lack in some resources, but we're working, you know, we're beating the drum around those resources. We're not making excuses, you know, without additional resources, very little money, we eliminated those low-level classes, we added, almost doubled our AP offerings, those are just two areas. We have some, you know, rough waters that we have to get through the next couple of years, but, so we need an incredible leader, an instructional leader, somebody that's a visionary, but that can bring a vision to reality, and, you know, whether it's an internal candidate or it's somebody that we're not aware of, we're gonna take the time that we need. So I just wanted to reiterate that. There was a recent law, in fact, I was only able to find, this came through a There was a recent law, in fact, I was only able to find, this came through ERISA Superintendent's Association update, and maybe Mr. Anderson knows a little bit, but it requires carbon monoxide detectors in every school. I think it stemmed from an issue that happened in Cranston that was very publicized this past year. Jason's been working with the fire marshal, because the law is vague. It just says that there will be carbon monoxide detectors in every building. Currently, we have carbon monoxide detectors like near, where we have boilers, where the food service, where there would be, you know, giving off some carbon monoxide. And Jason sent me an email because I asked him for an update, but he's working with Mark Vincent, who's the fire marshal at Hopkins Hill. And they said, you know, this has to be in place by January of 2019. So I don't know if it's a Fire Marshal Association, he just said it's NFPA, but they're working with the legislator, looking at the legislation and looking at what does this mean? And he asked, he stated to us, don't take any action until they get more clarification. Because the regulation, the legislation does indicate in terms of fire code. And so just want to keep the committee, in case you're aware of this or you heard this, that we are on top of this, we're working with the fire marshal. We have three fire marshals that we deal with here, but I believe this individual has oversight over the most schools. So Jason's working with him, but I will come back and have Jason, we'll update you on that. And the last thing is that, and I, and I, I met with Ms. Ferguson today and talked about, just to, you know, make sure that, you know, informed her about this, is that we've talked a lot about CTE, career tech, you know, there's a lot in the news, there's a lot, the governor definitely pushes jobs. But we all know how important it is. We know that we need to get, you know, not to go into cliches, but we need to get students college and/or career ready. You know, we have some great model programs. And I felt that a good way to be proactive and to be supportive, I came before the committee in the community, maybe a year and a half ago, and said the idea was to get a consultant to come out, but we didn't have the resources to do that, and we've tried different things. But I felt that if we could, and again, it's just throwing it out there, but I think the subcommittees that we've put together have been very effective, and they've made some good recommendations. They also helps get buy-in from the committee. And I felt that this would be a good way to get, you know, if we could get a couple of individuals from the committee to have a CTE subcommittee, I know Ms. Ferguson's more than willing to work and support, and then look at what we can do to continue to improve the offerings. And, you know, we had a conversation today about how, you know, and how we can support one another in terms of, I'm not even looking, it would be nice to bring in more and more students from other districts, but we want to look at getting the message out and keeping students that we have and continuing that work and continuing to look. But, you know, if you notice in the title of Ms. Ferguson, Mrs. Ferguson, it still says Assistant Principal/ Director. And even though we made it, I think, more possible to do the duties and responsibilities, you still have other responsibilities. So what I'm looking for is a subcommittee that can work with Ms. Ferguson and come up with their charge and then make recommendations to the school committee and to the superintendent.
Now, would that just be, you know, people from the school committee, or would we engage the community also?
Well, I think it's just like we do in the policy subcommittee, that the committee, the subcommittee is comprised of core members, which consists of a couple of school committee. But then, depending on the policy, you know, I don't, you know, I'm not going to have, you know, Ms. Ferguson or Mr. Chase come to a policy that may pertain to something that has to do with Jason Martin, you know? So that's how I would look at it. You know, that's something that I would think that you guys would decide. But I look at it as something that, instead of just kind of reporting, and, you know, and we had a conversation and Ms. Ferguson even suggested about, you know, getting a regular, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but kind of a regular agenda item where you come, or people come and we report out. Because we realize it's a big, you know, we're fortunate to have a regional career tech center, but we also want to maximize it. We know we're at, you know, we teeter totter. We want to get to that point where we can reinvest. You know, we hear about Pontigan, but we also hear the challenges from Mrs. McNurelli, the challenges that Pontigan's had faced early on. And we're in transition. We started to, we included four new pathways. But I feel that this would be the best, as superintendent, that I can support the work that she is doing, that her staff is doing. And, you know, I, like I said, and I've shared this with the community before, that when I go to ride meetings and I go to the state meetings, you know, people always tell me about how in the, you know, in terms of how knowledgeable Ms. Ferguson is and, you know, and current, and always applaud, but I feel like, you know, how do we provide more support in terms of what we need to do? So, I mean, to answer your question, I feel like that would be something you would decide, depending on what we're talking about. If we're talking about technology and how do we revamp the technology, I think that's going to be different people. But it's just an idea, and I've had a couple, a few conversations, so I just wanted to throw that out there. And I feel that way, you know, like, you know, like I said, I feel that's the best way I can be supportive. Because I'm looking for some concrete recommendations that come, that we prioritize, whether it's through budgeting, you know, we include in the budget, but that we get complete buy-in. And I shared that with Ms. Ferguson, it's, you know, I'm kind of the messenger sometimes, asking for information, but then we try to interpret, what does it mean? And I really don't know, and it's, I don't feel like that's supportive, you know? And I feel this is the best way to be supportive. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And the committee can choose to do whatever you choose to do, but I just feel it's the best way that I can support the work that's being done currently.
Well, I think that this potential is very exciting, and I would certainly be willing to explore with Mrs. Ferguson what her goals might be and what a potential agenda would be, and then go from there. So I'd love to have some other people work on this too.
I would, I would love to. That's like my forte. I, that's, I would really love to get some.
And I guess you have your two.
Yes, you too.
Well, you could get more than two. Yeah, we could.
Because we post meetings.
Okay, so if that's true, I'd be interested as well. So, anybody else?
Yeah.
You got plenty of people there, Ms. Ferguson.
How about you, James?
If I have time, sure.
I make time for that. All right.
I'm going to abstain.
So I think it's a great idea as well, and I look forward to getting a committee together. And any leadership from your side that you think, maybe teachers or whatever, that you think should come, I'm a part of that. And obviously, they're going to have to be after, no, after 5:00 for the working folk here that have to come back to Coventry. But yeah, I think that's a great idea, so.
Okay, that's it for you, right? Okay. Any questions for the superintendent? Anything that he spoke to that anybody has questions for? Seeing none, I guess we can move on to the chairperson's report. And I don't have anything to report. Lucky you guys. I guess the only thing I really have to report, I don't know if all the public knows this, that all of the school committee members who had races, have races in the fall are unopposed. So we are going to be your representatives come November. So, and that was me, Donna, and James. So.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
First time for me in five races, so I can't say that I'm unhappy about that. So I guess that's the only thing. So moving on to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments from the peanut gallery gathered? I know they're all employees. Nothing? All right, then I guess we can schedule our next meeting. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the next meeting of the school committee be scheduled for Thursday, August 9th, 2018, at 7:00 PM at Coventry Town Hall.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to adjournment. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the meeting be adjourned at 8:30 PM.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you all for coming.